Okay, I'd like to welcome all of you to the May 22nd Planning Board Meeting. My name is Lucy Bisson, I'm the Chair, and Ms. Kittredge, would you please call the board?
Roger Dupre.
Here.
Joshua Najin.
Here.
Michael Marcot.
President.
Shanna Cox.
Here.
Lucy Bisson.
Here.
Myself, Christine Kittredge.
Lee Albert.
Here.
Alexander Pine.
Here.
All right, since Amy Smith is not here, Alex will be a voting member this evening. And for the record of staff, we have Shelley Norton, the Deputy Director, City Planner, and Linda Tripp, Administrative Assistant.
And David.
Oh, and David Hediger, he's hiding, but he will be here. Okay, David Hediger is the Director of Planning and Code Enforcement. All righty, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, we don't.
Any correspondence?
No.
Okay, so let's get on to the public hearings. The City of Lewiston has submitted a development review application to construct a new 9,025 square foot fire station at 9 J.D. Way. Ms. Norton.
The project is on a just under two acre undeveloped parcel which is at the end of J.D. Way, which is off of Molson Way, and is a dead end road. The project requires the reconstruction and extension of J.D. Way to the city street standards from the start of Molson Way into the dead end, which is right next to the proposed fire station. The project has two curb cuts off of J.D. Way and circulation through the site. It also involves the reorienting and changing of driveway entrances for 17 and 33 Molson Way, which both have accesses off of J.D. Way as well as Molson Way. The project doesn't have a specific parking requirement, being that it's a municipal building and facility is the use. So similar to some other projects where we've done this, our ordinance does state that if there's not something specific in the off park, street parking standards for a use, that the planning board should determine what would be a sufficient amount of parking. The applicant has in their application two, sorry, 10 spaces for employees and two spaces for visitors, and has stated that they believe those 12 spaces will be sufficient, and has asked the board to find that that is a sufficient amount of parking. The only other really notable thing is that there is a buffer requirement along the parcels that front King Street, or King Avenue, rather. The applicant is proposing to use a 50-foot no-cut strip. There is some existing vegetation there, and over time additional vegetation would grow and fill in the buffer. So that's what they're proposing for their buffer with those residences. They have, they are showing a couple of trees that they're proposing to put in next to the Woodlands Senior Living Facility, but those are not required by the ordinance. So staff has one condition of approval that we're recommending, which is a standard condition you've seen with other projects, that prior to a certificate of occupancy, a professional engineer would provide a stamped statement indicating that all the stormwater and site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan. And then the two actions that we would suggest you take, the first would be a finding on parking, and then the second would be a motion on the project itself.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board for staff?
One.
You have a one, a question?
Yes, sorry.
Of course.
Shelley, will you describe the, I think you said, heavy-duty 50-foot cut? Can you tell us what that is?
The buffer?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. So there is existing vegetation on-site. There are some deciduous trees, and so what they're showing on their plan is essentially a 50-foot deep area where they wouldn't do any cutting, that would just be allowed to grow over time. So you would have a buffer that's the full length or width of the parcel and 50-foot deep to those residences. And actually, when we, when the applicant goes through the drawings there, you'll see that their building is set back more than the 50 feet.
So 50-foot minimum.
Minimum, that's right. But that's what they're showing on the plan, yeah.
Okay. All right. Would the applicant like to come up and give us your name and residence, and tell us all about it?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Will Haskell, I'm with Gorill Palmer Consulting Engineers. We're an engineering firm that works a lot with the city. We're based down in South Portland, South Portland, Maine. Okay, Shelley's given a lot of background on the project. I guess, in no particular order, just, and you've probably already seen it, but in Attachment H of the application, there were some pictures of the existing vegetated buffer. So just to give you a sense of what that existing vegetation, now this is, they were taken in the wintertime, so there aren't leaves on the trees at that point, but just to give you a sense of what that buffer looks like.
Thanks.
Okay, so let me, is that going to work? Probably not. All right, so this is a site plan of the, of the project. As Shelley indicated, we are extending J.D. Way, or reconstructing J.D. Way, for about 600 feet from Molson Way, up to the project site. And we've got, again, two curb cuts. The first, the first one from Molson Way is basically, would be the exit from the vehicle bays, so the fire truck bays would come out there. When fire trucks come back in, I'm assuming they would come around the back and pull through, so they can, they can head out towards J.D. Way when they, when they leave, leave the site. So you can see the 10 employee parking spaces in the back, and then, I wish I could get that cursor to work, the two, or the visitor spaces are over here on, on this curb cut Again, I think just for getting people aligned, we did provide, or, let me back up here. So the 50-foot no-cut buffer is this line here, so the residential properties are all back here. We also provided 16 blue spruce trees along this edge here, which is adjacent, or closest to the Senior Living Facility. And we have four street trees along the frontage of the facility here, so that, that would be the extent of the tree plantings on the site. There's an existing wetland over on, on this side of the site here, on the northerly, northerly side of the site. We, we can't avoid a little bit of impact to that, so there is a little over 2,100 square feet of wetland impact to that wetland, with the parking or the access drive here and the associated grading that goes around this side of the building here. We also located a generator here, emergency generator, is over on this side. We located it on this side of the building to get it as far away from the Senior Living Facility as we could, and we're, we're well beyond the 50-foot buffer in terms of the residential properties back here. Electrical will come off of a, an overhead electrical line that actually runs down this property line here. So electrical will come off and go to the building that way. And then we have water and sewer that come, will be extended up J.D. Way, come up and extend into the building here. Stormwater, so this site, if not all of you know, was a former racetrack or fairgrounds, but there was, in the original subdivision for this project, there was a set amount of impervious surface that was allowed for this parcel, and it was 75% of impervious coverage was actually the allowed amount for this parcel, and we are only creating about 30, 31 and a half percent. So we're well below the previously permitted stormwater. Stormwater runoff will be collected from the site, will be connected into a new storm drain that runs down J.D. Way to the public storm drain system in Molson Way, which discharges into a drainage channel a little bit further up Molson Way. The existing drainage actually runs through here and down to that same discharge location at Molson Way, but we couldn't, we didn't want to increase the runoff to this adjacent parcel, so that is why we actually collected it and put it into a storm, a closed storm drain system and ran it down to Molson Way, so it didn't have any impacts onto the adjacent We've got a couple of light fixtures, various locations, again, all full cutoff light fixtures, so it's not going to extend lighting onto, onto the adjacent properties. Let's try and see what else we've got here. There's no external dumpster for the facility, so my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but they collect the trash in the building, and then someone come and pick it up?
So at all the other fire stations, we just get regular curbside pickup with all the other property. I'm assuming this will be the same.
Yeah. One thing that I think is in the works, and maybe Jeff can weigh in on this, but, because I'm not sure of the status, but there is an existing gas line that runs through this 50-foot buffer back here. This, this darker hatch area, I believe, is the easement for the existing gas line that runs through here. And one of the things that we've been looking at is whether we will be extending natural gas service to the facility, and I'm not sure what the status of that is.
They're working on it.
Okay, still working on it. See if I've got anything else to say here. Yeah, I think that pretty much covers it, so I'm more than welcome, more than willing to take questions, so.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Dupre?
What's the distance between the fire station and the two existing businesses on both sides of J.D. Way?
So, so you're saying the two businesses that are closer down to Molson Way?
Yeah, you've got the pediatric place, and then you've got the other, the center on the other side.
Memory care.
Yeah, memory care's on the other end. You've got two businesses on each side, J.D. Way.
Yeah, you're talking the one that's, so this is our site right here, if you're looking at the plan, you're talking the business that's right here, and then the other business that's on this parcel here. I don't have the exact distances on that, to, for you on that. I do know the businesses are located more towards the Molson Way frontage of those properties. I know this business over here, for example, has quite a large parking area in back of it, so we're quite a ways away from that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have an exact distance for you, I can certainly get that, but...
That'd be pediatric associates?
Pediatrics is on the right side.
This side?
Nope, movie person.
Right here.
Yep.
Yep.
And the other one is the medical office building, I'm not sure who the tenant is in there now.
I think it just changed names.
Again? Wasn't it Chance, or for the last time, wasn't it Chance? It's been...
It's up there today.
Yeah, there's, it's changed names a number of times. Okay. Roger, are you ahead?
We still going to have the same itinerary as far as the fire, the sirens coming out of the building, going through those two?
No, so we purchased that lot from the Woodlands, and during the negotiation process, they were concerned about the noise, and I assured them that that's a no-traffic area, there's no need sirens or horns or anything else until they get down towards the intersection by Main Street. We assured them that we would not impact their business with unreasonable noise.
Because we're still having the same situation on North Temple?
I, I was, somebody communicated with me one time, over a year ago about that, and I have not heard another word.
Chief, could you get to the mic goes, so that we can, because this is recorded, and your voice may not.
So I'm unaware of any complaints at North Temple. I received one complaint from a member of the planning board, probably two years ago, a year and a half ago.
That's probably Mr. Dupre, he lives in the neighborhood.
Okay, I think it came from Pauline, but was she a member of the planning board?
Oh, yeah, she was, Pauline Gudis was the Chair.
Yeah, so she had communicated with me about that, and I, I've talked to those guys many times out there, and I didn't think it was a problem. And when I asked her if she could give me a specific time or day that it happened, I would know who's doing it. And she said that, you know, she would pass that along, and I haven't heard a word since then, so I assumed there wasn't a problem.
Saturday morning, 11 o'clock, fire truck comes out, the third house, from the corner, sirens went off all the way through Sabata Street. And they weren't supposed to be doing that until they got to Sabata Street.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I could talk to them again. We also, I don't believe we have the signaling, the preemption device installed yet. So they're supposed to have a device that turns the light green at Sabata Street, and I don't think that's been installed yet.
Well, the red light was flashing.
Talking about the streetlight, it was supposed to be green.
Yeah, over Sabata Street, the red, red light was flashing, but like I say, he started his siren, the third house, from the corner of Rachel Boulevard.
Yeah, so I don't know why he would do that, I mean, I've told them, there's not, there's no traffic there, I'm really not sure why they're doing that, I've talked to them, I've talked to them again.
Appreciate it.
Just your Saturday morning crew.
Yeah, I'll figure out who that was.
He was able to give you the information you needed.
Is that the A, or the B, or the C, or?
Well...
No, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I think that was a B shift.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Roger, do you have any more?
No, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Michael?
Mentioned power lines. Are the, are the poles already there?
Yes, so there's an existing overhead power along this west of the property line. The...
So those poles are already, already serving somebody?
Poles are already, yes, they're all overhead. I'm not sure where those go. At the back of the property, the south corner there, they actually turn 90 degrees and head north of the northwest there. Do you know where those go?
They kind of through the buffer from, from Manhattan, from the east side.
Are they providing service to McKesson, McKesson, what was formerly the McKesson Building?
I believe so, they are at the pediatric.
And the pediatric.
Yeah.
Okay. As Dave knows, I'd like to see that put underground whenever possible, but they were already standing, I can understand.
We are proposing underground from those overhead poles to the building.
To the, okay.
But there's just that existing overhead pole line there.
I, I had another topic. How does this building compare to Station 4 on North Temple?
The size?
The size and utility.
I'm not familiar with Station 4.
So it's substantially similar in the footprint, but on this building, the Station 4 has three bays, and on this one, it has two truck bays, but the footprint is the same, that third bay is walled off for storage, so it has a large amount of ground level storage, which is something that we don't have.
It doesn't come all the way through. So where I see the, yeah, we have the arrow now.
Just has a door there.
Just a door there, it doesn't come all the way through.
It doesn't go all the way through, it's just a, like a standard, you know, garage doors, it's probably a nine-by-nine or something that, you know, we could just back a pickup truck in, and it's just going to be ground level storage, even though we have a lot of square footage. In our fire stations, we have very little ground level storage.
So the 9,025 square feet is roughly the same as North Temple?
It's substant, I don't know what the square footage of Station 4 is, but it's very similar. Says the living quarters are essentially identical, I think the plus or minus may be 100 square feet.
So as far as the, the design, the layout's very similar.
It's substantially similar. We reversed a couple of things, I think the gym and the kitchen were flip-flopped to opposite ends of the building, so people driving by don't have to watch the firefighters grilling.
Are there expansion possibilities to the building, on the land that's provided?
I don't, we have no plans for that, and I don't believe that would really allow for it.
I mean, one of the challenges is this wetland over on the side, so if, if there was to be an expansion, say, an additional bay, there would, there would be more wetland impact there. Not totally unfeasible, but there...
I was just wondering, further out on the, where it goes northeast, as far as the orientation of the map?
Up and...
Up and there, or even down in the southwest corner, off the drive? If you need to add something 10, 20, 30 years down the road?
Yeah, there's definitely some room to do that. This, this kind of show, this plan here is the grading plan, so you can kind of see the limits of the grading around the site, which, you know, takes up a little bit of space on, on this side, but there's, there's definitely some...
So it kind of goes uphill all the way around, or downhill?
That's, that's down to, to this, this ground here, so we built the fire station up a little bit to get it up above the, the wetland.
Yeah.
Anything else? Michael?
No, that was it, thank you.
Alex?
So I think this is maybe a sort of staff-related question, but maybe for everyone. Looking at the neighborhood overall, there's a lot of impairments to pedestrian access, you know, there's a lot of, you'd have to walk all the way around if you're leaving the memory care facility, to go to some of the amenities that are further up the road from there, and I'm wondering if there's any chance, even though there isn't a sidewalk on this street, to intentionally design in some pedestrian path, pathway at the end of J.D., or this extension of J.D. through to the memory care facility, if they'd be open to that? If there's like a treatment or something? Because, you know, looking at this, it's like, the street's going to dead end, I'm sure there's going to be something signifying the dead end, like a sign or something like that, and it's pretty easy to imagine just people sort of, you know, walking across the lawn, carving a path in the dirt.
Are you talking about like memory care employees, or like, I'm not sure they would want like the public just wandering across their property?
Yeah, employees.
Yeah, I don't...
Riding them with pedestrian access to this section of street. Or at least, you know, is there anything in our street design standard that allows for like vehicular traffic to terminate at the end of a street, but then provides sort of a more inviting gateway for pedestrian traffic?
Well, they, don't think they want anybody just driving up to that, the end of that street and parking there, I mean, this is...
Oh, no, 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 yeah, definitely not parking, but more for folks who either work at the memory care facility, or, I know when I live...
Why would they be walking around?
There's opportunities for like lunch over.
Yeah, but...
Yep, or if you're on a break, just like stretching your legs. I, I used to work in an office park similar to this, and it was nice to be able to go outside, so I guess I'm talking about providing, providing...
I know the people who, I've worked in that, in that park, too, and, and people walk either in the, in the driveways of other, or on the, there is a sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and what, I guess what I was saying is that this seems like it's providing an opportunity for people to leave the back of the building and maybe have a shorter walk to get to some of the amenities further around the circle, rather than walking all the way around the other side, so.
Yeah, okay. David?
Lucy, and Jeff might know this or, or not, I don't know, but I feel as though, or maybe even the chief knows this, I feel like there was conversations when this property was bought from the Woodlands, that they wanted separation to the nth degree as far as...
Gotcha.
And I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but I feel like I've heard some conversations to that. Otherwise, you wouldn't, I would agree, it would be nice to have some type of even future connectivity, but I think given the clientele of that establishment, they were more concerned about like, how do we...
Security.
How do we limit anything from happening?
Right, I would think it, security would be...
Yeah, that, that was part of negotiations. We had to meet with the, the owner of the Woodlands several times to assure them that, you know, we would put up a fence, plant trees, we would do whatever we had to do to buffer the properties, so they weren't, there was no distractions...
Gotcha.
From our operation.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Are there any plans to manage the wetland space, or is that just going to sort of be left as-is, or is it going to be landscaped in any way?
No, we, we can't landscape the wetlands, or else that counts as an impact, so...
Okay.
The, the wetlands that remain are going to be remaining wetlands. There will be an overflow that if that area fills up with water from drainage at some point, it will spill into the drainage system, but, you know, going to end up causing problems there, but...
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, at this point, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or against this project? If you would go up to the podium and state your name and your residence, you have three minutes, sir.
I'll try to be fast.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Eric Terrio, I live at 70 King Ave. If you look at the parking lot on that photo, roughly the middle of it, go directly left, and that's my house. Now, right behind there, that gray strip, grayish strip, that, I believe you mentioned that was a, a gas main easement, it's also roughly paved, it's old pavement, but it's there. I always thought it was an access road. But between the back of my lot to where the vegetation actually starts is about 25, 30 feet. If that's included in the 50-foot buffer, that only leaves about 20, 25 feet as a buffer. So is that 50 feet starting at the access road, or at the end of the property line on King Ave? Because a 50-foot buffer versus a 25-foot buffer is quite a, quite a difference. My second concern is on the report from, I forgot the name, sorry about that, Gorill and Palmer, under number five, where it mentions traffic information, they mentioned that it's not expected to significantly impact the adjacent roadway network. If anybody spent any time on King Ave, it is a racetrack, ever since it got improved about four years ago, especially in the morning rush hour, in the aft, in the evening hour shower, and on weekends, people are just flying up and down that road. And if, I'm not saying that this construction will cause more traffic, but it will funnel more traffic over to King Ave, and I just take exception with that statement where "it will not significantly impact." It probably will, I mean, it's already obscene. Now, I'm in favor of this project, I think it's a great idea. The facility currently on Main Street is woefully inadequate, and the fire department not only deserves it, they require a better facility, and this would be it. And having a, a public safety building so close to where I live would actually be very welcome. I'm just concerned, A, about the traffic, but B, that buffer being significant, being enough to buffer the noise. I don't anticipate much noise, and I'm very happy that the chief said that the sirens would not start to the corridor of Main Street, I may be very happy, but it's still going to be some, I, I don't anticipate it being a full 50-foot buffer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So can you address the gentleman's concerns about the, that being semi-paved?
Yeah, I mean, again, my underst...
I mean, you, you have pictures, but they were taken in the winter, so it's kind of difficult to see...
Right.
...the ground, you know, if, if it was paved or not, you can't see.
Yeah, and I may ask Jeff to see if he has more information, but if there is pavement there, I don't believe it's, it's like new pavement, it's, it's very old.
Right, right.
So...
So I believe there's vegetation as well. Uh, so the 50 feet is definitely from the back property line of the, of the properties, the residential properties here, uh, to this line here. So there, there definitely is 50 feet of width there that's called out as a no-cut buffer. Um, is it completely full of vegetation? I'm not making that statement that it is completely full of vegetation, but there is vegetation, as you can see
Right, right. We can see it.
In the photos, that there, there is vegetation in that buffer. Um, so Jeff, I don't know if you know anything more about that paved strip, but...
I don't. I haven't walked in there.
Yeah.
I don't have it either.
Yeah. So we, we could go back out there and look at it now, uh, see what it looks like, but it's...
Right. Um, David, is there some way that we can, you know, protect the neighbors and make sure that if it's not really buffered, I mean, it could be 50 feet, but it might not be that, that vegetated?
Um, and I'll, I'll look to show you for backup on this, but I don't know that they necessarily need a 50-foot vegetated buffer out there.
Okay, so it's just a 50-foot buffer?
It's just a matter of a buffer. In this case, they're providing a 50-foot swath.
Right.
And within that, that could be a stagger row of plantings. There could be a fence. Um, we're under the impression that there was sufficient vegetation there to meet the current provisions of the ordinance.
Okay.
Um, I didn't know about paved path out there either, so that's, that's news to me as well.
Right.
I think we're gonna try to pull it up on an aerial just to see if anything showed up on there as well.
Okay.
I mean, there's this area.
Right. Right.
Let me put some out.
Yeah, this, this shows it, and it shows it pretty, pretty buffered. I mean, pretty vegetated.
Could we switch back to the aerial from the wintertime? 'Cause I think we could get a better sense of the height of the vegetation based on the shadows in this. So looking at it, to me, it doesn't seem like there isn't, there isn't too much in the way of fairly tall trees. Maybe it's lower brush, maybe like person height rather than, you know, 10 feet.
May I, I'm sure?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not sure, and, and sir, unfortunately, you can't respond to my questions, so like make eye contact, but, um, I'm, it seemed like the content of your concern was less around the visual impact and more about noise. And trees aren't going to change that. In fact, if they put up a really nice metal fence, it would only amplify that. And our buffer is a visual buffer. Otherwise, there's a different ordinance that talks about decibels and sound. And so the, it sounds like the answer to your question is there's at least 50 feet of buffer from the property line, which is kind of agnostic towards pavement, not pavement, form and raceways, tree lines, gas lines, power lines, but that it's 50 foot from the product, the property line. And winter, spring, summer, fall, I don't know that those trees would, any trees or any other buffers or plantings would really address the concerns about noise. The good news is unless they're preparing for a battle of the bridges, maybe, maybe most of the sounds will be inside the gym or outside and related to food grilling.
Yeah, if I may. It, it's not really gonna be a noisy operation. Um, there'll be one, one truck stationed there. Um, they'll be coming and going, you know, at various times of the day and night. There may be some other trucks, uh, you know, that show up to fill air bottles or, you know, drop things off in the storage area, pick things up, but it, it won't be, um, a loud operation. I mean, the trucks aren't, it's a fairly modern fleet. They're pretty quiet.
Okay. My, um, Mr. Markott?
Uh, I was, I was curious. Most of that white space around the parking area, is that gonna be lawn? Is it gonna be mowed?
Bless you.
Uh, right in the front will be lawn and, and around the sides, I mean...
Behind the 10 parking spaces?
Yeah, I would say that they're gonna mow, uh, you know, some area around that, but they're not necessarily gonna mow all the way back to that 50-foot buffer because I don't think they wanna spend the time to do that.
I'm sure that they don't.
Because I'm just thinking over time, you could have some growth out back there. And I, I believe that the, you know, the pavement that has been spoken of, uh, was an old access road behind the, uh, grandstands at the racetrack. So it's one of those roads, like few of our roads in Lewiston that are crumbling, and, uh, maybe we could even take some of it, but some of it up as reclaim, if it, uh, growth needs to be encouraged back there.
Possible. Uh, you could also damage some of the existing vegetation in the process of doing that.
Right. Yeah, it might make more, more, more of a mess than you, than you're trying to correct.
I, I know there's vegetation growing in the middle of my street, my dead-end street, right now. And of course, you, you don't want too much, not cover if, uh, you've got a gas line under there that you might need to dig up to get to.
That's right. Okay. Mr. Nageen?
The only point that I would make is if there is a substantial amount of, of, um, asphalt back there, um, even if it is, uh, broken up, um, you know, just maybe turning it once or harrowing it or doing something in order to create, because there's also impacted ground below it as well. And so it can take a while for space like that to actually, you know, reforest. And I, and I know it's an expense, you know, it's, it's not necessarily anything that, that I'm saying that I, I would make as a, as a provision, but if there's a possibility of, of, you know, breaking up that concrete a bit or the asphalt, I think it would help. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
There was one other comment, um, that was made relative to traffic. So I guess I'm a little unclear on the comment in terms of how, um, the butter feels that this project would increase traffic on King Ave. Um, so I, I don't know if clarification there or, or not, but I, I'm, I'm unclear as to how this, this project would increase traffic on King Ave, I guess, at this point. So I don't know how to answer that question.
Mr. Markott?
That reminded me of a question I was going to ask. Uh, so when you come out onto Molleson Way, you're always gonna be taking a left to go to Main Street?
Well, to go to Main Street, they will always take a left, but, uh, you know, if they have a call on...
On Central Ave.
You know, on Highland Spring, they're probably gonna take a right.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, but, but to go to...
But you wouldn't have a purpose to take a right at, uh, King Ave to go to Main Street?
No.
Unless you're going to a King Ave address?
No, I, that, I mean, I couldn't say for sure. I mean, but I don't believe there's a lot of fire truck traffic on King Ave. I mean, I think that they...
Is there, there are a few side streets that dead-end off of King, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But that was, one of the things I talked about with the seller of the property was that, you know, 99% of our calls, they're gonna be taking a left. A lot of them are not gonna be driving past the Woodlands. Um, you know, Main Street is, is a, is a commercial area. It's a commercial road. That would be a, a much, uh, that would be a fire route over College Street. You know, we don't want the fire trucks, you know, going down a residential street five times a night. Um, so they will be using Main Street, you know, to go to Bates College and downtown.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right. Mr. Nageen?
Just one point on that as well. Ki-- King Ave is marked as for local traffic only, is it not? And when you come to the back end of the Molleson Way, petition, is there, is there any clear signage from that end indicating that you're not to continue? Uh, that, that it's, it is, okay. So, I mean, that's at least something.
Yeah, I mean, there's not much else we, we can do. I mean, I, I understand that people love to take the shortcut, shortcut. And, and, yeah, so. All right, if there are no more questions or comments, I'll entertain, um...
Lucy, um, can you close the public hearing, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. This time I'll close the public hearing. Sorry. Uh, we need to make a finding and then make a motion. Mr. Markott?
So there's two motions, right?
There's, there's a, a finding and a motion.
I definitely wanna make the motion, but, um, make a finding in accordance with Article 12, Section 17, off-street parking and loading, that the proposed 12 parking spaces for the fire station at 9 J.D. Way are sufficient for the proposed use.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dupree? All right. Any further questions or comments from the board? In that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nageen?
Yes.
Michael Markott?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
And Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by the City of Lewiston for a new fire station at 9 J.D. Way meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the Zoning and Land Use Code, including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the following conditions, if any, and as one, prior to certificate of occupancy being issued, a professional engineer must provide a stamped statement indicating all stormwater and site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Nageen, any further questions or comments? In that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nageen?
Yes.
Michael Markott?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
And Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck.
All right.
Thank you.
(laughing).
I live in the middle of Sabata Street. It's nothing but fire trucks and ambulances from both directions.
So do I. So do I live on Sabata Street. Okay, the second public hearing tonight is a public hearing in consideration of adoption of the Riverfront Island Master Plan Update. Update. All righty, and Ms. Norton?
Excuse me. Okay. Um, so as you're all aware, last year, um, about a year ago, in fact, the city moved forward with contracting with Halverson Teagan Bond Studio to update the Riverfront Island Master Plan over the course of this last year. And you were at a number of these sessions. We had public input sessions and committee meetings, and the update is finally complete. You, uh, actually will be having a joint meeting tomorrow night with the council, um, for further review of it, but tonight is the public hearing on that document. So, um, we ask that you open it to the public, and then, um, ideally, the request has been made by, um, the city administrator that you would make your referral to the council at tomorrow night's meeting.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. If anyone wants to speak in favor or against this document, hey, we, yeah, speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, in that case, I'm gonna close it from the public, and we'll hold on to this until tomorrow. Okay?
I have a comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, just the, first of all, thanks for like the printed nice document. It really does make a big difference when we're considering this. And I think they did a really great job. Um, it made me fully appreciate how much of the plan they overviewed with us and heard our feedback, and then really gave us something that felt very connected.
Yeah.
Both what we'd seen and what we'd said. And so it's, this is, there's no surprises here, and it's beautiful and well done.
Hmm, absolutely.
Great.
Okay, now we'll go to other business. The planning board initiating an amendment to the Zoning and Land Use Code for the Resource Conservation Zoning District to allow for greater impervious surfaces for a public sewer utility project. Ms. Norton, or David, I'm sorry. Mr. Hediger?
I could dish it off to her there. Um, LOPCA is working with Public Works to build underground storage tanks down on Lincoln Street. And in order to do that, um, they need to build within the Resource Protections or Resource Conservation District down there. They've been talking to us about how to accomplish that, and originally, these were gonna be underground, but that's gonna be very expensive, so they talked about building them above ground or partially above ground. Above ground has a roof. The roof increases the impervious area. The RC is limited to 10% impervious area. So really, the only way they can move forward down there with any kind of additional structure of any kind is to amend the RC zone. And they've been talking to us about how to do that. And I suggested, well, you could pursue an amendment to the Zoning and Land Use Code to increase that. What would you need to increase that to? And they said not more than 25%. So what you have before you tonight is a request to initiate an amendment to the RC zone to allow, um, impervious area within the RC for public sewer utility projects. It's very specific to that. And the applicant is here to speak to this, um, where they propose some language that would narrow this down to just a specific type of use that would in fact benefit, um, water quality. And that was kind of the thought here, is that we don't necessarily wanna allow a lot of impervious in the RC, but if we're going to allow it, which should probably be for some type of natural resource, environmental benefit. Um, so that's, that's kind of the summary of it tonight. I guess I would ask that you folks consider turning it over to, um, both representatives of LOPCA and the consultant from SABAGO, and they can give you a little more justification as to the reason why it's worth doing.
Yeah?
It's a staff question. Um, well, so our motion doesn't say anything about, uh, specific use. And I don't know if our language in the motion provided is, needs some updating?
Um, you can do that. Um, certainly when you hear the actual proposal, if you folks, you know, go forward with it, then we have to schedule a public hearing, and we'll have the actual language done at that point.
Okay.
You'll see in the, um, request from SABAGO, they have some specific language in there. And I, honestly, I'm not sure if that's exactly where we're gonna land, but they have language in there that is very specific as to what the impervious would be limited to.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
No.
Um, just in terms of like our suggestion to the SABAGO team, um, I guess I'm wondering, and I, you're sure you're gonna answer this, and so I apologize in a second, but, um, if it's specific to this property, why wouldn't we do a waiver or a contract or something with this particular property? And, and if it is because we have hopes of other public use, land-water conservation necessities for public utilities on other RC land, is that part of today's conversation?
Owens can probably remind me. Uh, we did talk about a contract zone at one point. Um, we're not hu-- there's a time and a place for contract zones, and maybe one could argue that this is a good place for a contract zone. Um, I know we try to avoid them upstairs whenever we can, um, just because a straight rezoning is easier. Um, to your point, it would potentially allow this to occur in other areas, and I don't know, maybe Public Works or LOPCA has intentions of doing this somewhere else where this would benefit. I think this is gonna be very limited, though, so, um, we could do a contract zone, I suppose. In either case, um, it's either initiated by you folks, the planning, uh, city council or petition. Um, we kinda landed on this. I'm sure there's another reason I'm not remembering right now that, that maybe I could be reminded of. So I suppose you do have that option if you wanted to go either way.
And whether it's applicant or staff, will you be able to show us all of the, um, similarly zoned properties in Lewiston on like a big, pretty map that you can do a layer on?
Um, we can. We can pull it up on the GIS tonight just to kinda navigate those areas. There isn't a lot of areas. It's traditionally, most of it is the 100-year flood zone throughout Lewiston. There are a handful of other areas like Thorncrag that are zoned, resource conservation.
Well, and I think that's kind of the point. There's not much of it. And so if we're gonna apply 25% impervious surface to all of the handful of properties that have really good use, does it make sense either for the language that I'm sure we're about to hear, this is gonna answer all my questions, for it to be specific about the, about the change in the zoning language, to be specific about the use, so that I can't put up a 25% parking lot in my RC plot, right? Um, and so that's really my concern. I'm sure you've got a crafty way of answering it.
My, Michael?
You stole my thunder, 'cause that was the first thing that I saw and first thought I had was contract zone.
Yeah.
So, and I think Shannon just pointed out everything, probably said it better than I could have.
Okay.
So we'll see what the presentation is.
Josh?
Um, yeah, we'll see through the presentation, but one of the things I noted in the packet was that the language was very intentional on, on the rezoning, and it was very specific. And so I have a, a hard time envisioning how anyone other than this particular organization could use this to, to benefit them. So just a, just, just a, and in fact, it actually benefits the river. Um, so I, I did enjoy the, the specificity of, of, of the, of the contract zone. I'm gonna, we should probably...
Would you please, and identify yourself, and maybe you can answer the questions that have been posed?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Uh, good evening. My name is Owens McCullough. I'm a civil engineer with SABAGO Technics here this evening on behalf of LOPCA. With me is Travis Peaslee, who is the general manager... With me is Travis Peaslee, who is the general manager of LOPCA, and Jeff Bullier, who's a city engineer, has been working with us. So, contract zone versus text change, we, we had some substantive conversation around that, and the thinking was, is we looked at the underlying purpose of the RC zone, which is to restrict development for, to protect the water quality, right, of the, of the river and the resources. Wastewater treatment plants by nature get located right next to those resources, and so this project, right now, what happens is during heavy storm events, combined sewer goes over and into the river. So by design, and this is actually an EPA mandated and DEP project, we're gonna improve the water quality, so we're reducing that, that biological load going into the river. So we thought, we talked about, should we go contract? Should we do a narrow text change? And looking at the intent of the RC zone, which is water quality, we thought that a very narrow text change made the most sense, because I don't think you want parking lots or building developments or things like that in the zone, but this has a massive benefit to the water quality of the river to do this sort of project. And Jeff, even the tanks, yes, there's an, we create the impervious surface, and we even added in another provision at the last sentence that will also treat the stormwater that runs off the roof of it. It'll get treated to the chapter five hundred, so not only are we lowering the amount of discharge that goes into the river, but we'll actually take care of our own surface water that runs off of it. But the thinking was, keep it really narrow, and we're just, this is, we're stuck in this location. We looked at, I'll be honest, we looked at other locations on the property, and I've either got more RC in other locations, I've got where, when they excavated to put the building in, there's an area of contaminated soils that got stockpiled on the site. If I could show the arrow, this was years and years ago, and we, what am I doing wrong here?
I might, oh, that's okay.
There you go. Okay, I'm not doing this. What?
No, you're doing it great.
I was having trouble using it on the glass.
All right, I'm gonna use the cursor. So, so this area, so this area here is, is standing water that comes in from the river. It's a lovely duck place. I was out there looking at it. This area here is where the contaminated soils are, and there's really no functional way to get over to this location, and so the only place we have left is really this area in blue up here along the entrance coming in. I have some setbacks from the stream for DEP seventy-five feet, and this location in here is already disturbed. It just so happens to be in the floodplain, which I'm not sure it's ever really flooded up into there, but technically, it's in the floodplain, and I think the RC zone mimics that, and that qualifies under the twenty-five percent rule. We went through the analysis to calculate what impervious is out there, went through a study to sort of figure out what we needed for impervious surface and where we could put it, and this is the last spot, and we have to be next to the treatment plant because from Lewiston and Auburn, the influence comes in, it gets diverted into these tanks, and then we're close to the treatment plant, so we can de-water into the treatment plant, and then treat the water before it goes back into the, into the river. And we're, we're just in a very unusual, unique situation, and we thought, well, we could go through a contract zone, and we talked about that, but we just thought that given the unique nature of this, maybe a text change would be the most appropriate way, and I'm not sure who else would ever even be able to use, use this. It's, it's really focused on, this is a pretty significant project for LOPCA. We're talking over twenty million dollars to clean up the, the water in the bay, and we're trying to do our best to manage those costs, and one of the ways is to use a partial above grade, above-ground tank. Trying to just look out for the, honestly, look out for the ratepayers a little bit.
Sure, sure, then, we appreciate that, I'll tell you. Okay, anyone have any questions for the presenter? Michael?
Josh.
Oh, Al?
I was just gonna say that everything you said makes sense to me. It seems like a really good project. Like gut reaction is sort of like, huh, doing a zoning change for one project and like codifying that seems sort of weird, but like, it makes sense, so.
Well, it's not zoning, it's just a cha, a text amendment.
Or, or text change, sorry. Text change to the zoning.
Right.
For one project sort of seems like bad form, just from like a gut reaction, but you went through the reasoning here, and that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think so too, Michael.
I had a couple of questions. So the size of this building, a tank, would take in any kind of torrential rainfall, or would there still be some spillover from time to time?
So there will still be an overflow into it. LOPCA went through an exercise, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna try not to go down too much technically, even, even I will fail at getting too deep into it, but they do a bunch of modeling, they look at the storms basically capturing about ninety percent, not about ninety percent of the overflow comes in the first inch or two of storms, and they went through a process with the EP to agree on, on what storms they would treat, and it came out to be three-point-one million gallons of storage tanks. And we're actually looking at, again, I'm sorry if I'm going into too much detail, but we're actually looking at some interior plant optimization improvements that might be able to lower that three-point-one million down to about two-point-one million, but we need to be prepared to put in three-point-one million gallons of storage so that we meet the EPA and the DEP requirements for treatment. And it, it's not unlike what other communities are facing. Gardeners had to do it, Bangor, I'm working on the one, and Portland, sorry, the soccer fields are all torn up for one more year, and then it'll be back, but it, it's significant improvement to the water quality.
Good.
After watching a video this afternoon, I was just interested in the Harlem River, and hearing some of the CSO conversation that was in the middle of this just terrified me.
Yeah.
It's like, they're just ignoring the problem on combined sewer overflow. But maybe this question is more for staff. When you mentioned that you'd be treating your own impervious surface, the water runoff, does that mean that this would not be counted towards the stormwater calculation citywide? So would this qualify for not being added to the impervious surface of the municipal responsibility?
Wait, the MS four, is that what?
I'm not su, so the way it's designed, as I understand, it's gonna be infiltration, so it's gonna infiltrate, the, the impervious from the tanks would infiltrate right into the ground, and that would be the treatment itself.
Well, it'll, I, I wanna be, I wanna be upfront. So we could use, we don't know exactly how we'll treat it, but we're gonna treat it to the main DEP chapter five hundred standards, and there's a whole set of different options we have. We could use underdrained soil filters, we could use wet ponds, we could do created gravel wetlands, we can do LIDs, and what we wanted to do was build that, make sure we had that flexibility to choose what fits best for the tanks. We don't know whether these tanks yet will be circular, there, there could be up to three tanks, or it could be two tanks, and they may be rectangular, they may be circular, and that will dictate the strategies we use to treat the stormwater, so we were trying to build.
Be kind of vague, just, just vague enough.
Yeah, right. We're still gonna meet it. Jeff here makes me toe the line, so.
Okay, you're gonna treat it, but, but vague, right now, it's, it's still in the vague. So when you do design it and come back, so they're gonna be coming back.
We will be back to see you.
Before, once they've got the designs and stuff. So at that time, we can, we can ask those questions and get exact answers, because then they'll know if they're circular, square, rectangular.
Well, that's, that's what I was picturing, was like a circular dome, and it would just run around the sides and then, and be captured within itself, self-contained.
If it's circular zone, I personally would wanna pursue an under, treated drip edge around the edge of it with stone and collect it that way.
Yeah.
But if it's rectangular, I may have to do something different. And again, we're trying to be, be conscientious of the costs. The circular tanks can be pre-cast, so can the rectangular, but when we go out, the, we're looking for the, again, to be the most conscientious, but have a functional operational system that LOPCA is gonna be able to maintain and take care of for many, many years.
Okay, all right. Roger?
Now, are these tanks gonna be connected at all to the sewage plant?
Yes. They will de-water to the sewage plant. So they'll fill up, and then when the sewage plant has capacity, then they will de-water by gravity to the sewage plant.
And from there, it's discharged into the river?
Correct, just like the treated wastewater is today, but only this time it'll be treated.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Owens, does it make sense to make the distinction between like stormwater and combined sewer, maybe?
So, sure. So you have storm drain systems that collect street drainage runoff from parks and parking lots, and that goes directly into the receiving water bodies, okay? In our case, there is sewer lines, so like the influent lines from Lewiston and Auburn, during certain times of the year when groundwater could be up or we could get a large storm event, the treatment plant just simply doesn't have the capacity to handle that, that, all that water coming in, and then that water, unfortunately, right now in those storms, overflows right into the river. And instead of doing that, it's gonna get diverted into these tanks, held into these tanks till Travis has the capacity to treat it, and then it'll get treated and then discharged into the river.
Okay, great. Shannon?
Thanks. Unless you have super magic powers like Shelley, I would still like to see the zoning map of where RC is in the city.
Oh, that's up to him.
Yeah, that's what I figured. It's a couple of clicks in the GIS system, but I'd still love to see it. Wasn't gonna put you on the hot spot for it.
Yeah, that goes beyond my powers.
Yep. Shelley's getting real good at it. Yeah.
So it'll probably be better if David helps tell me where our RC is. We can zoom in on it, but.
If you zoom out a lot, will it show up as colored splotches?
No, we do not have a colored map.
What if you turn the aerial off? Would it look, will it be easier if you put it on?
That might be easier, yes.
Oh, there it is, the little dots, right?
Yeah, I think we have to zoom in in order for the.
There you go.
Areas to probably.
Okay, there it starts.
And so the little dots are your floodplain.
Okay, RC, that's, that's one, and that's Mount Hope. So it's going the other way. So there, that's for, for the, for the.
My question's not to the parcel, but the whole city, so you.
Right, but it's all along that, the river.
Yeah, it's pretty much along the river until you get to.
Until you get to Locust Street, you know, that, okay.
Let me ask it this way, is there any non-riverfront parcels like Thorn Craig?
Go to, do you know where like Thorn Craig is in Garcelan Bog, Shelley?
And I'm happy to like give a little why I'm headed in this direction. I'm, I'm for the rationale that you used for a text amendment instead of a contract rezone.
There is one there, okay.
But.
We've got somewhere on Garcelan, which is probably based on a wetland layer, so that's how, why it was drawn that way. And then.
Go north of there.
Is there any out by Dyer?
There's some there, too.
I don't think so, yeah.
Yeah, there's some to the right there.
The right should be, yeah, there you go.
All of Thorn Craig is RC, so that's there. And then there's probably no name pond that you're.
Yeah, that's exactly.
And there's no name pond.
Bottom of a no name pond, I think.
And then the outflow, so that's probably a large wetland south of it as well.
Most of the RC, and I, I mean, most probably, you know, eighty percent is not developable probably because it's wet to begin with.
Yeah.
And then that other ten percent is probably floodplains.
Yeah.
That could be developed like we're talking about here, but it would have to meet certain flood provision. So if LOPCA wanted to build a building there, they actually could, but they'd have to flood.
Is it okay to mention?
Oh, oh, and realize you were.
Is that all right? Yeah, no, this question was going with something, and I, if I might. I appreciate the rationale behind this, but to apply that rationale in a way that makes a lot of sense to me, I'm not gonna argue this, if, I'm not gonna die on this particular hill, but if the language or something similar to it, I did hear the note that we're not like final, but if the language that you offer is specific to sewer utilities, then, and by the nature of how sewer utilities are created, defined, maintained, and placed, most of the places that are RC don't make sense. If the goal and the text amendment language that comes forward is to say that the best use to protect and maintain resources in resource districts will have to be best served by anything that brings it to the twenty-five percent, then it would, it would allow a potential use in some of those other areas that would never be cited for a sewer utility, like, this is a nail because you're a hammer. But I really appreciate the whole toolbox and the fact that if the goal is to make sure RC districts, RC zone parcels in Lewiston have an exception if and only if the additional impervious surface meets the best value of that natural resource that it is preserving, then I'm all in, and I don't care if it's for a sewer. Makes sense on this parcel and where you're at. So if the goal of changing the text for all of our RC zone parcels are about making sure that it's in alignment with the resource being conserved, then I would not only make this motion tonight myself, but also say, come back with language that's about something to the heart of the resource it's conserving and not specific to, because you're not gonna get a sewer utility in Barcelan Bog or ninety percent of those places, in which case, great, let's do a contract rezone, because this is about your parcel, your water utility plant, right? If it's about, there are, there are times when it is appropriate to make an exception, and those times are if and only if the property and choice of use is going to somehow enhance and better preserve the resources that are being conserved, then that's what it should say, and not be specific or exclusive to only sewer. I don't know what that looks like, but if there was a twenty-five percent impervious improvement to Thorn Craig that allows for better conservation and bird watching, then like, great, and it doesn't have to be for sewer.
I'm gonna look at these guys.
Does that make sense? The feedback at least, wherever you run with it, it's you.
Honestly, I didn't go either way. I mean, I, I can, if I didn't say it, I'm sure I did, I, I don't like contract zones unless we have to, and if, if we can avoid them, we should. In this case, though, I mean, I don't necessarily disagree if this is gonna be something that's probably used once.
Right.
And that's it. And to Alex's point, otherwise, we would normally not like to zone something just for one time on a, on a use. So I think you could go either way. I think the, the bigger concern for LOPCA was the time to have something initiated, so if the board is.
I'm not opposed to a text amendment. I don't think the best version of it is about resource conservation and not specific sewer utility use.
I don't know that it makes a difference to us necessarily, other than maybe personal preference. I think it's more important for probably LOPCA as far as having you folks initiate something, because they just have some time constraints that they like to make.
We've got some federal money that unfortunately, we need to spend by a certain time.
Right, right. Okay, Alex?
So just a process point, tonight, we're voting on getting the process started of rewriting.
Correct.
We're not actually voting on the text.
Which is why this suggestion's important now, though. Well, yeah, but she's saying, do we do a text amendment?
That wasn't, that wasn't directly response to you. I don't, that didn't come off as catty or something. I was just curious, because I'm, just wanna make sure that I understand what we're voting about. I like the sentiment of, this is in response to you, I like the sentiment of making sure what we write into code, like, is applicable to so many, to other projects, to like, the spirit of it. I think my concern with going that route is that, you know, there's this project that just needs to sort of get through the system. That's a larger question of sort of the like intent behind RC, and it seems like a thorny one, just because we'd have to sort of imagine the future for, for some pretty limited sections of land, albeit they are very important. of land, albeit they are very important. So I'd just like to say I'm in favor of getting the process going for this one project. I like the sentiment, but I'm not sure it's the biggest fish to fry at the moment.
Mr. Najin?
The only thing I would just put into this conversation is that the specificity and the intentionality of the text change is something that I actually really, really value, and I don't think that there's any reason whatsoever to change any of the resource protection zoning at this moment, with the exception of this project. And so that's why I would, I would support the text amendment change over, on overhauling of the resource conservation zones. Just, just my thought.
Okay, so what is, okay, so let's work with the, the motion that we have.
Yeah, I'm happy to make it.
And get, get the process started and...
Yep, we'll go from there.
I'd like to make a motion to initiate code amendments to increase the impervious surface coverage in the resource conservation district not to exceed 25% pursuant to Article VII Planning Board Powers and Duties and Article 17 Amendment Section 5B1C.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, Roger. Any further discussion on the, from the board? I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yep.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Okay, let's get the process started.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Planning Board Recommendation to the City Council on the Disposition of 30 Blake Street.
Okay, so 30 Blake Street is a vacant parcel. It previously had a two-family dwelling on it, which was condemned last year and has since been demolished by the city. The city has approached a number of downtown property owners and abutters about developing the lot, and the city administrator has determined that the lot is a surplus property. So the action requested is for the board to send a favorable recommendation to City Council for the disposition of the property.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Michael?
We have an idea where this is going.
What do you mean, where it's going?
What, what, there are several methods that the city can use for disposing of the property. You mentioned that various abutters have been spoken with as if, whether they have interest or not. So there's probably an interested party.
I don't know as there is. I don't know as there is not. This is not something I really know anything about. I don't know if you know anything from meetings you've had.
Yeah, only because of, I was involved in the demolition of it. There's at least two abutters that have expressed interest. And then as of even last week, Alan Ward, who's our purchasing agent who processes all this, he got an email from some random individual expressing interest. So I, my guess is, I'm not sure what we're going to do, if it's just going to be negotiation, notification to abutters or an RFP. Probably an RFP.
Is it developable on its own?
Yes. I believe that's what the memo says.
Well, that's what I thought I remembered reading, but that's probably why you got interest from a random individual. Because it makes sense, it would make great parking for one or more of the abutters, if you have two people, two property owners in the neighborhood that are interested. I was just wondering if the city's going to put it out to bid, know whether the city was just simply going to negotiate with a certain individual, which is one of the methods that they can use.
I don't think, I, the latter I don't think is going to happen. From planning code's perspective, we've thought that it should go to one abutter, but beyond that, I don't know how the process will play out.
Because my, my preference would be an abutter, but through a bid process, especially if there's more than one abutter interested.
Okay. Mr. Najin?
And unfortunately, I guess I'm just the contrarian today. But due to the fact that it is buildable, is there any way that, and I guess this is a question for staff, but is there any way that we could indicate that we would want it to be built upon, released to somebody who would build upon it? And the reason, the reason why I bring this up is the owner of multiple vacant lots that can be built on, you know, we are in a housing shortage. Also, dirt parking lots do not create revenues for the city, houses do. And so just a thought, I don't know if we have the ability to, to say we should release this only if it's going to be...
Can we, can we make a recommendation?
You can. I mean, it's, as you know, I mean, it's a recommendation at that point, so...
Right, because this is just a recommendation anyways.
Right, so you can, you could...
You could tack on...
Make a recommendation that it, we recommend the sale of the property, we recommend that it be RFP, we recommend that, you know...
Priority given to sale for folks with developable, tax increasing suggested development.
Yeah, for residential development or something. I mean, you guys can, you know, within reason, you can make lots of conditions on it to try to influence the, the actual decision making.
Right, okay. Okay. Any further comments? Alex?
I'm in support of the sentiment that we should recommend selling it to be turned into a built thing, not a parking lot.
All right. Any further comments, questions? This is not a public hearing, so we don't have to go to the public. I'll entertain a motion. Who wants to? Joshua, you've got some suggestions.
Sounded like he was going somewhere.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion pursuant to Article 12, Section 4...
No, 7.
Sorry, 7.
[laughing].
Section 4H of the Zoning and Land Use Code, send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for the disposition of 30 Blake Street, including, if any, specific conditions or concerns raised by the Planning Board, which would be the following, that we would take preference, that it would go to bid through RFP, and that we would take preference that it would be sold for, hopefully to develop as, as a form of housing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Michael?
Just a little curious. When I looked at this at first, and I was thinking, parking. The building next door, how many units are in it? 28 and 26? I assume that both of those addresses are Blake Street, even though it looks like it could be Jack Court.
Go to 3 and 6, let's find out.
If we could, in this case, switch it to the aerial view as well, that'd be great.
So 26 Blake has three dwelling units.
2.
34 Blake has nine. Are there other parcels you're interested in seeing?
Could, could we just see the aerial as well?
A little confused by that one. 20, okay, because the...
So this building's been demolished, even though it's showing a building?
Yeah.
Yep.
And the one night next to it, it shows on the, in the packet, 28 up front and 26 behind it. That's probably not the case. Okay, so 26, 28 is behind it, and 24 is beside it. Okay, so there's 12 units in there.
Nine and three in the other property.
So this one was nine.
Oh, oh, okay, on the other side.
Yeah, on the other side.
And there's another undeveloped lot.
And that...
What's the address for that undeveloped lot?
Looks like 76 Oak.
76 Oak.
This one is the, what you're asking about?
Yeah, I just want to see how big it is.
Oh, so there's only three at 28.
6, 26.
Oh, 26.
It doesn't look like that vacant lot has anything, right? So there's nothing in it. What were you looking for?
45 by 100. That's not, is that buildable? Does it have enough street?
30 Blake?
No, Oak.
76 Oak.
Because it's, it's only 45 feet wide.
Only 25.
I would assume that says...
Okay, for that, okay.
So it's all part of the same zoning district, so it should be...
So there's only three units in that...
Sontreville is very forgiving. It doesn't have like a minimum lot size.
Oh, wait, this is, this is Sontreville.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, okay.
So I don't think it has a minimum frontage either.
So they can build wall to wall on the perimeter of the parcel?
Yeah, I don't remember if there's an impervious surface.
And, and 28, which is that interesting shape all the way back to Jack Court, only has three units in it?
Are you talking about 26? Because I don't think there is a 28.
There's not a 28. Where did you see 28?
If you look in the packet, the aerial that's included, it's a postal address, so I'm, I'm guessing the building up, you know, the units in the front building are 28, and then there's like 26 A and B or something like that.
So, so the entire elongated building only has three units in the entirety?
That's what our record is showing.
Because it looks like it would have more, it looks like it would have more units than what you were telling me at 34. 34 Blake has...
Well, there's a big difference between three four bedrooms and nine studios.
Yeah.
Right.
Or there's no difference.
And I can't tell the height from here, whether it's two stories, three or four.
Okay.
So, okay.
All right.
I have no, no problem.
No further, okay. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes.
Get that housing Lewiston, good luck.
All right, see what happens there. And next is the reading of the minutes. I need a motion to adopt the April 24th and May 8th minutes that were sent out to us this weekend. And I only made one very small...
Looks like you're not the only one.
Michael?
I had something as well.
Okay.
Can't remember what you, I saw your email, I can't remember what it was that you were addressing, but I don't think it was...
It was just a two. It, it, it made the sentence sound better.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't catch that one.
That was, that was all it was. Every, you know, there were no other typos or everything else looked okay.
So it's the April 24th minutes?
Yes, it was the April 24th minutes.
And other business five, where the motion was to table the agenda to the next meeting?
What day are we looking at?
22.
April 24th.
It's page eight, printed out. The vote was 511, and it says pass. Josh Najin abstained. Didn't have the opposing.
Hmm, okay.
I think I opposed.
Yeah. Okay, and do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended today?
I would make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Okay, so I did notice that, I couldn't find the copy, my copy of the letter that we sent to the City Council to discuss tomorrow.
Yes.
So when I contacted the city, the city administrator, Heather Hunter, to get a copy of it, she directed me to the agenda for tomorrow's, and we hadn't gotten the agenda yet. So at this point, you got the agenda today, and there is the Farwell Street traffic analysis that I just wanted to bring up, that I wanted everybody to have a chance to look at it, because we're going to be discussing it tomorrow night. And that's all. I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw it.
Can I ask a, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
About tomorrow's meeting?
Sure.
So we have the work session in which we'll get the presentation, we'll talk about the content of our letter, maybe not talk through our letter, but the intent and why we wanted to meet. Then we'll review the traffic study, then we actually enter into a meeting. And we are there for the joint special meeting, where we make the resolve.
You have the agenda in front of you, I'd have to look at it and...
Yeah, I'm just saying, we move from workshop into the joint meeting. And there's, that's where actions would be taken, because then it works...
The riverfront filing, that's a plan.
And so I guess my question is, before we adjourn tonight, you mentioned at the opening of the meeting that we were to make a recommendation tomorrow, but it looks like tomorrow we're resolving to adopt. Do we need to make a recommendate, formally, does the planning board need to make a recommendation for the City Council to then adopt? And is there an action related to that tonight, so that during the meeting portion tomorrow night, where we can take action, that a resolve can be effective?
Well, I think what they want to do is for us to make the recommendation tomorrow night, and then they'll, then they'll pass it. Then the City Council will pass it. We don't pass this.
I, I, yes, and yet that is not what the agenda states, and this is why I'm asking. It's like, you know, parliamentary process, and I'm just checking in. But if the planning board needs to make a formal recommendation to City Council that we adopt it, and the adoption is a joint vote between the planning board and the City Council tomorrow, after the workshop and in the actual meeting, does a recommendation need to come from the planning board so that we can then act on it together? Even if the actual resolve is like a olive branch, and the planning board is not required to adopt a resolve, from a process perspective, should we be making a recommendation that it is adopted by the council tomorrow? Whether it's, because we can't do it in the work session, so I'm just checking. It'd be really yucky to get there tomorrow, make it through the workshop, enter into the actual joint meeting, have a resolve to adopt that's acted on, and a recommendation from the planning board was never made.
I think it is, I guess the answer to your question, Shannon, technically, you folks do not have to adopt the resolve. That is up to the, that's up to the council.
Correct, but do we have to make a recommendation that it is adopted?
I think that's not a bad thing. Shelley and I talked about that, as far as you folks making some type of recommendation like that, given your with, with it, that way that the council just recognizes that you folks have been involved in the process, and that, you know, the comments you made earlier, as far as how it's come out well, and it's pretty much inclusive and no real surprises, if anything, it reinforces everything that was discussed. So I don't think it hurts to have that recommendation. I actually think it's cleaner if there's a recommendation.
Okay, so we should make a recommendation tonight?
And then act as...
And then act, and they'll, then they will act on it tomorrow.
You certainly can act as part of the resolve, and as, you know, I think administration's intent with that was to show solidarity as far as support of the overall plan, that we both embrace this, and that you folks are ultimately charged with keeping updates and tabs on that, like when we come back with the comprehensive plan, the, yeah, comprehensive...
Comprehensive plan. No.
Uh...
The RIMP?
Ca- capital improvement plan, excuse me, where we either, our department or Public Works makes requests for funding to actually move forward with implementation of that. Historically, you folks have looked to that document and said, oh yeah, there's money in there for riverfront, great, we're actually making progress, we're actually doing things.
I'm all for a both and approach. I'm certainly not, I would like our call for unity to have a moment tomorrow. But if there is an actual requirement for us to make a recommendation, I just want, we can't go backwards tomorrow.
I don't see if you're having a special joint meeting, any reason why you couldn't make that motion tomorrow night.
So you're saying you could, we could make the recommendation tomorrow night?
Right.
In the open meeting?
Right.
That, that...
Yeah, I don't think there's anything prohibitive from doing this. I mean, the primary intent tonight was to at least do the public notice, so there was a public hearing per se. I mean, it's not like we notify abutters, right? But we ran a legal ad, you posted upstairs, so there's been plenty of notice about this whole process.
Right.
If anything, no one should show up tonight. Everyone should have shown up at the earlier meeting set to discuss the process.
Michael, yes?
There was a public hearing tonight. Usually, public hearings come with a vote from the planning board, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
And I think what Shannon was pointing to, and I didn't catch it, was that there was no agenda item that said the planning board would make a motion of recommendation prior to the council doing a resolve, like having two separate votes, but in conjunction with each other. I didn't notice that it didn't say that. And one other question that I had with regards to the RIMP plan, that's probably redundant, the P is, the plan, it's part of the... it's part of the comprehensive plan, correct?
Yeah, we talked about that. So it, the comprehensive plan certainly recommends making improvements of, along the Riverfront, and it references the twenty-ten plan, twenty-twelve plan, whatever.
The initial plan.
So this is an update to that twenty-twelve.
So since it's all rolled into one, and the Planning Board is the keepers of the comp plan, as it is said, then we should be making a recommendation, whether that's tonight or tomorrow. Now, I understand that, uh, tonight's conversation could simply have been just to see if we're all on the same page for tomorrow night, but I don't wanna go into tomorrow night and just sit there and have the Council do its resolve, where we didn't really participate in anything but, uh, listening to the presentation. We need to take an action, uh, whether it's tonight or tomorrow.
All right, well, why, it.
Well, there is an action on the agenda for tomorrow that is a joint action.
You're right.
I just wanna make sure that we weren't missing a necessary procedural step for the Planning Board, and, for what it's worth, I love our moment of unity, that's planned tomorrow for a shared vote, and thus, I don't wanna preempt it with, look at my power grab, and the Planning Board has to take an action first. And my concern is, you're gonna, if there is no harm, no foul, I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Board recommends with full support the Riverfront Island Master Plan for the City Council to adopt. We'll get it out there, and it'll be done, because I don't want you to find out it was a step that needed to be taken, and us have to take it in the middle of the meeting tomorrow.
More importantly, I think your point about, uh, it looking like a power grab at a meeting where we're trying to.
Sounds yucky.
Or something like that.
Yeah, that's not the goal tomorrow.
Okay, all right, so make the motion.
I just did.
Okay, do I have a second?
Did you get it?
Yes. Second.
Okay, just to reiterate for the record, the motion was to, um, recommend that the Riverfront Island Master Plan be adopted by City Council as presented, with a job well done to the planners and city for the great process and result.
Okay, Alex seconded. Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
I'll abstain.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Okay, now.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, I have a question. I was gonna bring it up, maybe before the vote, but.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to know why Josh is not standing, but, um, I'd like to make sure that, uh, the recommendation is, uh, read into the record before the vote of the Council tomorrow?
Uh, we'll type it up and have it done. I mean, we'll distribute it in advance, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
As all recommendations to the City Council should be part of the Council's, uh, agenda and, uh, permanent record.
Okay, and Joshua, would you, uh.
Sure.
Share.
I wasn't seeking an answer.
No, but I think we should. We, we usually specify why.
I'm abstaining, one, because Administrator Hunter had asked us, uh, not to, uh, to, to wait until tomorrow, um, so that's one piece, but the second piece is that there's, um, some, I think, involvement, um, that, that is needed, um, from our economic development staff to see the RIMP through, and I would like to have that discussion with Council, um, before we vote on it, so, just.
Okay.
That's one.
All right, motion to adjourn. Do I have, have someone make me a motion to adjourn?
I, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you tomorrow night?
Thank you, everyone.
Um, six o'clock?
Uh, it's just.
Six o'clock?
I think there was a point of process.
On the agenda, right?
Doesn't say on the agenda. Oh, yeah, six o'clock, I'm sorry.
Point of process.
Six o'clock. Absolutely, sir.
Thank you for staying till.
I'm fully in favor, but that doesn't mean I'm.